Call the meeting to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Tell them how to do it, show them how to do it. Turn the mic on Marcus. Watch your tape. Go for it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands.
We are a nation under God, under His name. And we are free to do our own.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the May thirteen twenty twenty four agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Next we have a report of the board members.
Well, first I'd like to say I've been saying the pledge for a long time and I've never got a treat for saying the pledge. A couple of things, this wasn't necessarily a specific school activity, but I did attend the mayor's prayer breakfast a couple of weeks ago and just wanted to, I recognize our own board member, Dr. Douglas, for giving a great speech at that meeting. So appreciate her stepping in and doing that. It was a, it was a good event. I also wanted to say that I was, I was disappointed I wasn't able to be at the special board meeting that they voted on the teacher salaries and stuff last, last month as I was out of town. It seems like things are going well because the room's not packed with a bunch of teachers here tonight, but at my advanced age, I try not to learn too much stuff because my head can only hold so much stuff, but I have learned that, that even if things don't go your way, good things can still happen because I have to admit, quite frankly, I wanted the board to vote at our last regular meeting on those, those issues and I really did and I support the teachers, but it ended up, things didn't go my way, but the teachers ended up with even a better, better deal than if we had voted on them originally at the meeting. So I understand that and that's good, great news and I'm not sorry to say it, I'm glad that it worked out that way. So appreciate the action that this board took and hope the teacher, I mean, it was great publicity. I already had a call from a former teacher saying they want to come back to the district, so I think it was, it was good and appreciate the board's actions.
Well, I had the pleasure of attending at the Raytown High School, the play, The Diviners. It really was, I mean, the students are always amazing. There were parts that were making me laugh, but there are also parts that made me want to cry and just the ending was this very startling. I won't give it away unless you see it, but it was a really well thought out event and you know, their talent is second to none. Besides being on the board, as some of you know, one of my jobs, I'm in administration in another school district, but I happened to be at the Kaufman Real World Learning Event and there were many of our Raytown leaders there and then some of our students in Raytown and they were even part of a presentation, I guess you would say student ambassadors about market value assets. So that was kind of cool. All of my different worlds were coming together and I think I saw you. Yeah. Dr. Greiner. And then it was really neat to be at the Raytown High School Academic Night and the South High School Academic Night. Just some of the, I think there were like fifty eight and I may be getting this wrong, R F scholarships that were presented. Did I get that right? And then just everything from students that earned the Silla by literacy, the George Washington Carver Award for excellence and then just so many more. So that, it really makes you feel good when you see the achievements of our students. So it was really neat to go to both of those. Just kind of for my personal development, I always like to take a couple of little micro courses. And so one of them was educating the whole child with Dr. Rosa Perez Isaiah and unpacking identity affirming schools with Dr. Erica Buchanan Rivera. And I am looking forward to seeing all of the graduates this Sunday.
Good evening. In this last past month since our last meeting, I, I think I have this in the right category. Was able to attend the Sparkle Conference. It was wonderful. Those girls sparkled at this year's conference. Also got to join in with a part of our team here that went to the caring for kids banquet and fundraiser. It was a beautiful event. I got to, I'm grateful for being, the opportunity to be the keynote speaker at this year's mayor's prayer breakfast. It was wonderful. I'm grateful for that. And lastly, this weekend, I got to help facilitate Faith Bible Colleges graduation weekend. And why I mention it is because of the almost two hundred students that graduated, thirty-five of them were of all ages who had dropped out of school many years ago and went back to school and graduated with their high school diploma. Older people with a high school, you would have just, it was so wonderful. We were screaming and hollering like they got doctor degrees. So I, I was just very, very impressed and grateful to be a part of people coming back and whatever their condition was when they did, some had been to prison, some had sickness, some had gotten married, whatever the circumstance was, they got their high school diploma this weekend and I got to call their names for them to get it. So, thank you.
Good evening. This was a very, very, very busy month. Super busy month. I got to attend the Jelly Bean Judge and being a judge there was phenomenal. The student council put that on along with Ms. Thomas at Raytown South and it was like a tremendous event. That day I also had, got the opportunity to attend the Sparkle event that Dr. Martin Knox and the ladies put on. And then I came back here and got to see the tremendous Carl Cockcarr with the Ray team and listened to them before they, they had opportunity to tell us about the teachers and the events, the other things they wanted to do. So that was a very busy day for me. And then we went to the real world planning update with Dr. Greiner and at the Herndon Center and I got to attend that as well. I went to the D I B with, with Ms. Sarah Apple and the D I B group. And I also got to attend the caring for kids gala with Ms. Portia Seals and sat with Dr. Martin Knox and the other part of the crew. That was really, really nice. I went to the ACC Passion Project at the Herndon Center, both events, the morning and afternoon with the kids. And I also went to the Real World Learning business with the Herndon Group with Ray South and, and the presentation with the four E G Ls. We did all three sessions with them, with Dr. Greiner and the guys as well and got to present that to Herndon, Ray South and Raytown to the staff. And that was really, really entertaining to see how they would accept that. We, we went to the senior, I, I got invited to the senior parties at the Herndon Center for the, for the Raytown Innovation Group with Ms. Lily. I don't know if you guys know Ms. Lily from the, from the Herndon Center. She is absolutely phenomenal with the kids and she did a really, really spectacular send out for the seniors. I love to see how she interacts with those students and the, the passion that she had with those students and how much they're going to miss her and how they explain how much it, it meant to them to go through that process at the Herndon Center with, with them. I actually had some, had, had the opportunity to talk to some of the teachers and, and I mean, some of the students that was there. I had spoke with Ally Hoffman and I called Ally Hoffman in this evening and, and she was like really, really like a shy young lady. She did some things with, with the special needs children that we have at one of our schools and I, and me and Dr. Dr. Martin Knox had the opportunity to present her a plaque today that was well, well, well deserved. It was another young lady who did some, some things over at Raytown High School who made paper from scratch. Huh? Alyssa. And she made paper from scratch. And it's just some things that our kids do that's so amazing and it's so innovative that it just takes my breath away. So I just want to tell our kids to just keep up the good work and tell the teachers to just keep up the good work. It's not going unseen. I also had the opportunity to present Dr. Douglas, the keynote speaker at the mayor's prayer breakfast. She did a phenomenal job and just for me to be able to have that honor to do that was phenomenal for me. I went to the Real World Learning Retreat at the Kaufman Foundation, got the invite from, from Terrence Fraser to come over there and be with those guys. And then the last thing I did was went to the C A C meeting with Dr. Martin Knox and catch up and see everything that's going on in the Raytown District and that was fun. And one more thing that I did, I went to the baseball opening day ceremonies with the kids and that was like a phenomenal event. So I appreciate you guys letting me be a part of Raytown and thank you for everything.
Actually, I don't really eat a lot of oranges, but that's probably the best that would happen with the oranges for me. So it had to be pretty good. I mean, if it was something else, I probably would, probably would like to eat them more. But I can tell that they're doing a good job in there. I've been trying to, I've done visits schools weekly, just to, to walk around with Dr. Knox and see her interact with, with our kids, with our students. And it's really, it's really fun to do that. And I met a few students at Raytown, Raytown Middle.
One kid I met that, yeah, we, we're gonna have, we're gonna do, we're gonna have a lot of fun this summer. He's a, he's in the track and he likes to do math. So, so, and I, and I like math. So being an engineer, so I'm gonna try to convince him to be an engineer when he, when he grows up and in between his running. But I really appreciate the board and their, their activeness. Also, oh yeah, the retirement dinner. That was a, so what we did there was, because that was right after we gave the pay increase. So we locked the door and we presented them all with contracts and so everybody's coming back. No, no, well, not really, but I don't know, I don't know if we got anybody, but Dr. Knox asked a few times. But anyway, I really appreciate the, the activeness of the board and, and just our community coming together. It's really nice to see smiles on people's faces at this meeting. And so keep coming to the meetings and, and we'll keep the smiles going hopefully. And so, but we're all working together for the same thing to, to educate each and every, every child in our district. With that, that's the end of the report of board members. Next we'll have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. As many of the board members have already echoed some of the sentiments that I wanted to share, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment just to capture some of the celebrations that have happened, not just here in Raytown, but across the nation this past week. As you all know, many of you should know, we just celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. I don't believe we give teachers enough appreciation and a week is not enough time. So just because Teacher Appreciation Week is over, doesn't mean we stop saying thank you. The gratitude we have for those individuals who provide our children with quality education each and every day, and they're more than just teachers, they're doctors, they're lawyers, they're nurses, they're counselors, there are all these other things that they didn't tell us when we were going through school that it would be a part of what we do. But because we are educating the whole child, those are the things that must be done. So I am grateful that we have staff here in Raytown Quality Schools who are giving their all to our children. We also celebrated National Nurses Day. Our nurses are usually behind the scenes, but they take care of not just our children, but the adults too. So we are appreciative of the work of our school nurses. We also had superhero lunch day. I don't know the last time anybody has gone to a school, but check in on our cafeteria staff. They do an amazing job for our students because we know that health and nutrition is important to the learning and the development of our children. And while we don't see them very often, they are essential to the work that we do each and every day. Many of the board members spoke about some of the events and activities that have been taking place and it is the end of the year. So we are always celebrating as we bring closure to the end of the school year and you heard me, closure to the end of the school year. Can you believe we're here? Seems like we just started. But academic and awards nights at our high schools and at Herndon Career Center. I just want to take a moment to publicly thank our R F Foundation for the scholarships and the focus that they've given to our children to help propel them forward as they leave Raytown Quality Schools. So Ms. Cockrell, thank you and your staff and your team for presenting our students with such large amounts of funding, not just for one year for many of them, but for multiple years that they would qualify for. And I know it helps them along the way. We also had the opportunity to celebrate our culinary program who traveled all the way to my hometown of Baltimore to win second place in a national competition for culinary arts. It was just absolutely amazing to see these young adults engaged in such practice that you don't even oftentimes see in your high quality restaurants. So just kudos to Chef Mike and to our students who travel to Baltimore and those who helped them get there on the day to day operations of the school. I also want to talk to our Fleet Ridge Kindness staff. I actually went to the aquarium and the zoo and this is not a plug for them, but it is a plug. It is an amazing place. If you've not been there, I would encourage you to go. I interacted with the polar bears. Well, it was a statue, but I interacted with it and it was just really, a really, really nice environment, but it was even more so pleasing to see our students be recognized and our staff for their kindness. Because in a world right now where everything seems to be so cold and so intense, it was nice for individuals to be recognized for just being genuinely kind. And it was hard sitting at the table with people who were kind. When I asked to pass a cookie, they would pass it, but I was just joking. And so because they're kind, they gave me the cookie. And so, you know, just so many things going on and I just want to also give kudos to Raytown High School for them being selected for over nineteen Cappy's nominations for their work in theater. The hard work and dedication truly pays off. And I don't care what anybody says about children, particularly the children here in Raytown Quality Schools, they're top notch. So if you have one, I thank you for allowing us to educate them and thank you for trusting in them. And the final part of my announcement at this time, I want to give recognition because there was another day that occurred this week and it was, being quite frank, one that I was not familiar with. But whenever there's an opportunity to celebrate staff, we need to do that. We need to make sure we publicly recognize the work for our staff that they do every day. And this person is a behind the scenes person as well as with their team. And the other day, there was something called School Communicators Day and it was new. And it was new for me. And it was out by the National School Public Relations Association. So I did everything in my power to make sure we recognized our communicate. Are you hiding your face? I'm just going to deviate a little bit away. For somebody who has a career in communications, I have never seen anybody who doesn't like cameras, doesn't like microphones. She can tell people what to do, but she does not like being put on the spot. So that's why it was very difficult for us to keep this away from her. So Mrs. Cleaver Wambel, would you please come to, don't you tell me no. Can you please come to the front? Please. And at this time, Mr. Burton. And so Mr. Burton will read the, this is not okay. I'm coming over there with you. You can stand right there. I'm coming, hold her hand for me, please. Give him two more pieces of candy. Just hold her hand for me. And so Mr. Burton is going to read the proclamation and we will present her and her team with certificates of appreciation.
Right. This is the School Communicators Day Resolution. Whereas transparent and effective communication about Raytown Quality Schools programs, services, plans, decisions and priorities to students, families, staff and community stakeholders are critically important. And whereas school communicators work tirelessly to ensure meaningful parental and community involvement through communication to build support for schools and the children they serve. And whereas school communicators commit to practicing communications, public relations in ethical, in an ethical and comprehensive way that meets the needs and desires of all internal and external publics. And whereas school communicators serve as a strategic partner to serve school boards and to district, and to district and school leaders to develop communication plans to support their missions and goals. And whereas school communicators serve the critical function of an, of an information liaison between the school district and its community, representing the district and various community organizations. And whereas school communicators work to amplify the branding and key messages of a school district to new and existing audiences, now therefore be it resolved that the Raytown Quality School Board of Education proclaims the second Friday in May, May tenth, twenty twenty-four to be School Communicators Day and it be further resolved that the Raytown Quality School Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of school communicators. Approved by the Raytown Quality School Board of Education on this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four.
So while most of her staff did not know of this recognition, I just want to publicly say thank you to Kayla, Phyllis, Colin, who was the newest member of our team, and Melanie for just the work that they do. And again, when we talk about behind the scenes, she's it. And you are the epitome of excellence and perfection. So I appreciate you for you.
Now, as we just move on from eight point one, we will make a little adjustment to the report of the superintendent. Bond update, eight point six will then move down to eight point nine. And at this time, I'll ask Dr. Greiner to come forward presenting eight point six until eight point nine, please.
Thank you, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Newton, members of the board. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to provide some updates, starting with our summer school enrollment updated elementary. The attachment tonight shares our current enrollment. At the middle point of last week on regarding summer school, we are tracking close to last year's enrollment. At this point for elementary, we will begin loading our middle and high school enrollment as we get closer to the end of the year. But we're excited about our summer school programs happening across the district that begin in a few weeks. So as we are working towards the end of the regular school year and glad for us to be close to the finish, we also are excited about what the summer holds for students in Raytown. So we're excited about summer school on the horizon. Okay, next, tonight, it's my pleasure to provide an update to the board on some work that's been happening within a strategic plan project regarding the exploration of the career academy model. So I have a few slides to share with you tonight, board. So again, back to December, came to the board and provided some information at that point in terms of where we were in this project, how it aligned to the strategic plan. The, this particular project, project seven, has been something that we've been working towards for the last several months and definitely connects with our vision of wanting to provide readiness for career and life after graduation. So again, just a, a quick refresher on the why behind this work and specifically the plan. We've had a lot of people that have been part of this work over the last several months, our real world learning team. We've also had the pleasure of Mr. Newton joining us, Dr. Martin Knox. And so the, the members of the real world learning team that are mentioned here in this slide are very grateful for their work, again, over the last several months. So I know a bit hard to read for the audience, board, you might be able to see it a bit better from your screen, but essentially this plan has had several milestones over the last few months. Since the last time we were here sharing with the board updates back in December, we've had several milestones reached, starting with step nine and moving all the way down to steps sixteen. And so this, again, this work has involved a lot of different stakeholders, has involved a lot of different people being part of the work. And so we're excited tonight to provide an update on where we stand in terms of next steps. I will mention too, the success criteria of this project. Our goal was to have eighty percent staff agreement to pursue the next phase of the career academy model. And so that's part of what I'm here tonight to share with the board. Linked in the presentation is the explore visit report. Again, you're welcome to dive into that report into more detail. But from the visit with Ford Next Gen Learning Coaches in February, they prepared a written report that we, as a real world learning team reviewed and then shared with different stakeholder groups over several meetings over the last few weeks. Those stakeholder groups included staff, students, parents, community members. And then we actually shared with the entire high school staffs at Ray High, Ray South and Herndon Career Center. Again, as I mentioned, on April twenty-fourth, we had a chance to visit with high school staff, high school students, high school parents and community members, higher ed partners, and with the entire Raytown High School staff. On May first, we visited with Herndon and with South High. The presentation that we shared with each of those stakeholder groups is linked on this slide. Again, you're welcome to review that and happy to answer any questions at the end of this presentation. So next I'd like to share with, with the board our results of our exit ticket. So at the conclusion of each of our follow-up conversations on April twenty-fourth and May first, we asked our stakeholders to participate in an exit ticket to give us some feedback. We received a hundred and fifty-one responses and you can see the breakdown of which stakeholder groups participated in the survey. So just want to share some results to some of the questions that we asked. So the first question was, should the district consider changes that'll lead us closer to reaching the district's vision of ensuring all students graduate with academic and social emotional skills necessary to be college, career and life ready? And we had almost ninety-nine percent of participants indicate either strongly agree or agree with that statement. I believe the district should work collaboratively with Raytown and the Kansas City Metro businesses to make learning more relevant for students. We had over a ninety-three percent agreement rate. One of the biggest takeaways in talking with our students about trying to make learning more relevant for them was this desire to work collaboratively with local business to strengthen the relationships we have and even expand with more business partners throughout Raytown and the KC metro. with more business partners throughout Raytown and the KC Metro. The statement, I believe the district should invest in professional learning for staff that allows them to create more engaging and authentic learning experiences. Very strong ninety-eight percent agreement. And then the last, or I'm sorry, the second to last question we asked was, I believe based on the downward trend of key performance metrics like our attendance rate, our dropout rate, our on-grade level literacy and numeracy skills, our college readiness, that the district must consider transformative interventions. And we saw a ninety-two percent strongly agree, agree to that statement. The last question we asked our stakeholders, which best described their current thoughts on next step for Raytown. We asked if they would agree with the option of moving forward to be a part of the envision and planning phases of that Career Academy transformation. Or they agreed but weren't exactly sure of their level of involvement, or they disagreed with the option but had and had other suggestions. We saw almost a ninety-one percent agreement to move to phase two. And so tonight, with the board's permission, we are planning to move forward with engaging with Ford Next Gen on the Career Academy Transformation Phase Two. And again, so we were able to eclipse that eighty percent staff agreement goal. So a little bit, I'll just pause there, board, any questions on the information so far? So again, we were able to eclipse that eighty percent goal. And so just to tell you a little bit about what phase two includes, it's more conversation. We want to bring more community stakeholders to the table to really talk about what does a successful Career Academy transformation look like? We want to understand and develop the systems, the structures, the processes to be able to keep us moving in the right direction. We want to deepen a community-wide commitment. So it's really going to be important that our next step is cultivating more relationships with our community members to bring them to the table so that they can be part of this grassroots effort to increase relevant and rigorous learning for all of our kids. This process will likely begin sometime in the fall, so we're looking to begin these conversations September, October. And of course, we want the board to be part of that discussion as well. And so I will bring more information to the board about this next phase over the summer. If we moved on to the planning phase after envision, again, it would be us really creating a three-year long-range plan. And again, we would, we would build that based on the system structures and processes that we've created through that envision phase. I'll also mention that really at any point, whether it's in phase two or in phase three, this process combined is about a year, about a year long. But if we feel like we need to pause or we need to hit the off-ramp for whatever reason, we certainly have that option to do so. Really, our, our purpose is moving on to phase two. And then at that point, we'll make a decision about whether or not we'll move on to the, to the phase of master planning. These phases are part of a five-step, five-phase roadmap. And so again, we've just completed this first phase of exploration. Our next stop will be envision and then potentially planning. Steps two and three take about a year. So this is a, this is not something that happens quickly because we want to make sure we're having the right conversations and building community-wide support. Just wanted to recommend to the board, these links here are links to existing career academies that are across the country and in our own backyard. So we've had the pleasure of visiting Nashville, Independence, and Belton, communities that share some of the same successes and challenges that Raytown has. But we're excited to see what the, what the future could look like. And I definitely believe that these communities capture that vision of ensuring that all students are graduating with the skills they need and are ready for what's next. I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the board. Thank you. At this point, it's my pleasure to introduce our K-12 English and Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator, Jen Pearson, to share with you our district's comprehensive literacy plan.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk with you today about our Raytown students and literacy. I am really excited to bring this to you. It has been a project we've been working on for the year. It is aligned to board goal number one, which, you know, student achievement and literacy is at the heart of what we do for our students. And so this plan is going to put us on the track where we're going to make some great shifts. So thank you again. And there we go. So if you would like to take a closer look, I am, this is strategic plan number five, and it is about our student learning. And this project, however, just being a one-year thing, it will be something we review and go back to every year. This literacy plan does not go away from this moment forward. It's just going to be, continue to get better. So I'm excited about this. The first thing I wanted to kind of bring to your attention is the shift that we as a district made about two years ago. And that was that a shift to, and I don't know if you have heard about it, but with the science of reading. And it's a buzzword and, but it really is, it gets to how do our students learn how to read? And this graphic kind of gives you two, kind of just quick graphics of how we are getting students to read and how to make successful readers. So one is really just giving you, you know, are we teaching our students foundational literacy skills? So that literacy comprehension and then, and then also are we teaching our students knowledge? And so the only way they're going to be able to approach to be a skilled reader is if we have both of those pieces. The other graphic here is this reading rope. And we have adopted in the next slide, you will see, we use Amplify CKLA and Amplify ELA in our K-eight program for a resource. And it really is, it embeds both of these pieces, which one side would be the, you know, really about how students learn how to read with our decoding, encoding. And then the other side is really about language comprehension. We cannot get our students to, we can have them read words all day, but if they don't understand those words, then we're not going to have skilled readers. So what we're doing here in Raytown really is putting both of those pieces together to create some strong readers. So the next piece I wanted to just kind of bring to your attention is that shift here in Raytown, how we do have this at our core for core, our tier one. We have a solid tier one resource and curriculum in place. And moving to next year, we've got our high school, our eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh and twelfth grade having a solid resource as well for our tier one. So everyone's going to be using the same resource. And then for tier two, we have our, we have in addition to what our core provides, it's also giving us kind of a boost into what we can, how we can get our students who didn't get it the first time, some support to do that. So these are the resources that we are utilizing in tier two and then also in tier three. So for literacy in our district, we have a solid plan moving forward, which connects all three of those, the tiers to reach all of our students, not just the ones who struggle, but we also can enrich as well. A couple of things I'd like to point out is that we have two components, which are a computer-based program. And so that really is computer adaptive. That is not a teacher instructing, that is students being able to get onto a program. And it really does give them a path that will make them successful. So teachers can work through small groups with other students. So I'm excited about that. In our tier three, our special education and our reading specialist really are providing those resources for our students. So what brought this together was that Desi, last year, Desi provided a Senate bill and they said that we needed to, or we, I'm sorry, we, we've been given and an opportunity to write down what we do here in the district that really does support the science of reading in Raytown. So Desi has given us steps to be able to create a comprehensive literacy plan. And every district in the Missouri will need to create this. And it really does show us, it connects us with the science of reading. And so we are kind of ahead on this because we've already, we've already made that shift to the science of reading. So Desi has given us the first step and now we're getting ready to go into the second step. So what we did, knowing that the second step isn't complete yet and Desi hasn't given that, we have went ahead and began our literacy plan. And the first thing we did throughout this project this year was we identified the stakeholders to be on the team. And we, once we did that, we were able to kind of like pull together what's our current practice. And as you saw on the previous slide, it gave us our current practice and then our practice, what we're going to be moving into next year. And then the alignment to the science of reading. And then we've created some goals for this next year. And now we're working on that feedback and buy-in because we want to make sure we're covering all bases. So any questions so far? Sorry. Okay, yes. So our goal one is about student growth. We are going to utilize NWA reading fluency as well as reading growth to get our student to identify whether or not our comprehensive literacy plan is working. The first goal is going to be by May twenty-third of two thousand twenty-five, the number of students, Raytown Quality Students will increase their projected growth in reading from sixty-four percent to eighty percent using the state-approved assessments. The next goal is really about a needs assessment about what Desi is requiring us to do, but also just to make sure we're on the right track. And that is, Desi is going to provide a step, a needs assessment that we are going to be able to complete next year to make sure we're in alignment with what Desi expects us to do. And then the last goal is all about professional learning and how we are using everything that we're doing here in Raytown to, to really move our students to and so what we're going to, I'm sorry, what we're going to be doing is we're going to utilize letters training, which Desi has provided opportunities for our K-five teachers to go through. It really does teach our teachers how to teach reading down to the foundational level. We are also going to be utilizing the Marzano's strategies that our teacher leaders are going to be working through this next year. And we're going to do all that through collaborative teams to make sure that we are giving all of the all of the students and teachers what they need to be able to move forward. And so I know that was like this quick snapshot of like a twenty, or eighteen-page document and some Desi things that, but do you guys have any questions or anything? I'm really excited about it and thank you guys for your opportunity. Yeah.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll move to eight point nine, Josh Sheeston with bond updates.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton and Vice President Newton. Purpose of tonight is to go through and just give you an update on the bond progress. South, South High Point Arts Building is set to, to be complete the second to third work of this week of December, excuse me, I'm sorry. So everything is going as should there. We'll start, you'll look for some emails coming out from Rachel next week or so. We're going to do some walkthroughs with Billy Administration and we'll invite you guys to those as well. If you would like to come take a look to see what's going on, we're trying to get in a safe spot as far as not having things up out. We have almost all the concrete poured everywhere where we can walk and not worry about people tripping and falling. So we'll get that out sometime next week. Raytown High School is set, they're poor curbs last week. It's set to open the third week of July, so we'll be able to have it ready to go for the start of the school year. As of now, nothing has changed with budgets is, since the last update that I brought you. So all of that part is looking good as well. Are there any questions? Summer school. Soap Health. Dr. Moore is going to come up and talk more about this. I'm here to answer questions about potential locations. Dr. Moore is going to fill you in on the actual collaboration and potential partnership with Soap Health.
Evening, President Burton, or members, Dr. Moore Knox. Yeah, it was Soap Health Services. As you know, they're in Kansas City, comprehensive health services for the community. Dr. Moore Knox and I met with the CEO a little while back and he, they provide health service partnerships with school districts. First, mobile, where they drive trucks, they have been coming to three trailers for a while to provide dental care and screenings, health screenings. They also want, are willing to partner with us to put a clinic on site here to provide services, not only dental, but medical as well as mental health, other things in, in the area we're, we're looking at. So far, we've just been meeting with different people assessing the needs of the district, like with the nurses and student sports services and so forth. We've met with their lead people, their chief, like medical doctor, as well as their person in charge of mental health, as well as their person in charge of dental. And we've had meetings and most recently, they came to the site, walked with us. We met with Josh and the location we identified that possibly could work is the old woodworking shop at South High School. Would that downstairs where these be woodworking and I think metal classes. It will require some renovations and so forth, but they will be paying for that. This will come to our district at no cost. It would be no cost to our students for the services that they will provide. And it looks like a wonderful partnership right now. The MOU, we're looking at, looking at it and reviewing it and having our legal department look at it. And we will bring that soon. We have a MOU spelled out. At this point, we have, having discussions, listen, I think it's an excellent opportunity, provide need to healthcare services, screenings and so forth for our students. Any questions? Thank you. And they will help us. That's, that's wonderful. Work with us.
Mr. President, just, it sounds like you probably got a lot more details and stuff that you'll probably share with us later. But how would students from other buildings get, take advantage of this opportunity?
Those are the kind of logistical things we would have to work out. It would definitely be done during the school day, so somehow we will work out, provide transportation for that. Yes, sir. The mobile right now for starting the fall, because renovations would not, but actually starting this fall, they have a mobile unit that will go, will set up schedules go from school to school. And they're even willing to set up, come up and set up like emigration clinics at certain sites, especially at this. at certain sites, especially at this high schools to help with physicals, for athletic physicals and things of that nature as well. But for the fall, for, for me, time being, it'll be mobile. But as far as how they would get to South High, those logistical things we had to work out.
Dr. Moore, are these just for medical or this mental as well?
The areas are of mental health, medical and dental and preventative as well as care. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other quick question. Would we possibly be able to save any budget funds in like what we spend on school nurses and things like that?
I, I see this more as something as ancillary to that, that they're not, they don't plan on, I think staffing actual schools for that service. This would be like the clinic and they were staffed based on the needs that we have, that we do need assessment based on the needs of our students.
So it's a good question. It's not, it's in addition to what our students have. And so it started off, the genesis of this began when we were looking at the number of children we have to eliminate or exclude when it's time for immunizations to occur. And so we were looking for a way in which we could provide that support to our families. We had a meeting with Swope and they asked, is there anything they could do? And I said, sure, you can build a clinic. And so I thought it was just me being greedy, but yes, but it's for the kids and it's for the community. And so they came back and said, we can do that. And so again, it's in addition to what we already have in place. So it's not to substitute for our nurses, but it's really for our students and the families of our students as well. Just so they wouldn't have to travel too far and we could prevent the elimination of students without immunizations. But also as the preventative aspect of it as well for our children, particularly our older students at the high school. And as Dr. Moore said, we'll work out the logistical pieces if we have to transport our children or right now, we'll continue to rely on that mobile support that they provide.
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, I am bringing forward an HVAC tax credit incentive, not asking for a vote tonight, just to make you guys aware of it. I'll be coming back in July, more than likely to ask for a vote on it. What it is, we had a colleague from another district call me, they did not qualify for the tax incentive, but thought that we would. I met with Train. We do qualify for the tax incentive. What, what it qualifies for is Jackie and I have been working with our bond council to see, we have about $2 million in in reserves left over from 2019 bond. And then as long as everything tracks the way we should be tracking on our 2023 bond, we'll have some money there as well. As some of you know, and some of you don't know, because newer members to the board, we did an HVAC study three years ago and hired a firm to come in to say, hey, we, we know our HVAC is at end of life district wide with our, with our ground source, which is a well that's drilled into the ground 500 feet and it returns. It takes the, the heat or cold, depending on the season out and back. So we had that study done already. When I got with Train and went through this project with them, they're saying that the rebate will pay up to 40% of what we will, of what we can do. So it's a great opportunity for the district to be able to go, go in and make some, make some headway and, and say 40% on those things. So what we'd be looking at doing, our worst building right now is Raytown High School. So that's the first one that I've asked them to look at. Our loop temp is around 97, 98 degrees. It should be in the seventies to eighties. And so it's just where we're at. So what this is, is a back out clause. So they would go through and do everything. The letter that I have in front of you guys, the back out clause, I can't remember if it's 92 or $93,000. If we would back out, say they would go through, do all the drawings, do everything. It would be, it was what we would owe them if we backed out of it. I would not see us backing out of that. There are some stipulations on it. We have to use American made products, which is mainly what we use already, just for availability of parts and some nuances such as those things. This is not a one-time deal. It's, it goes on as long as we have funds to do it. We have to pay for the, the project upfront. And then once the project is done, they come out with auditors, look through, make sure all the work was done. Then that's when we get the rebate back. So the question that Jackie and I are working through with bond counsel is use of bond funds. Can we use those? We know that we could use those right now if it is, if there are funds that we're going to spend that 60% of it. The question mark that nobody seems to have a great answer on that we're working with Desi now on is the part that we're getting rebates on, can we use that or not? So more to come on that. Once, once we come and ask for a voter, once I come to you and ask for a vote about moving forward on this, we'll have, I'll have those answers for you. Are there any questions I can answer this time? So more coming in July.
And the final item under the superintendent's report is item 8.13, student representatives. But because they are graduating, I don't think we have, there they are. I retract that statement. Our student, student representatives, please come forward. I didn't even see you guys back there. Thank you. Bring a chair up so you won't have to stand. Please.
Hello, Board and President Burton. I'm Nicole Higgs.
And I'm Savannah Young.
We are student council representatives at Raytown High School. Our regular student representatives cannot be here, so we are filling in for them.
At the end of the year, we have been very busy. We hosted prom at Plex Pod downtown. Prom was a successful.
We are currently working on a joint food drive with South High. Our school is trying to collect as much peanut butter as possible while South is collecting jelly.
We went all out for teacher appreciation weeks. Students brought in baked goods. We had a flavored water station decorated the teacher's lounge and much more. We love our teachers and hope small acts made an impact.
We have some more things coming up, a Stuco social to meet with incoming freshmen and our student council retreat. We are also sending multiple students to Fulton, which is a summer camp for Stuco leaders. That is all we have. Thank you.
And I apologize for not recognizing you again, sitting back there. You were hiding your faces, but at this time, that does conclude the superintendent's report.
Next we have the ray of hope.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are recognizing two remarkable Raytown South High School senior student athletes. Both Zayla Van and Marcus Neal earned the National High School Strength Coaches Association's All-American Award, which is given annually to high school athletes who have demonstrated outstanding achievement on and off the field regarding strength and conditioning, athletic performance, academics and leadership. We have a video to learn a little bit more about these two amazing students.
I think Zayla's biggest impact is just being a part of so many things. And by being a part of so many different activities, you know, her friend group is big, but she gets to impact the adults in the building that are around her as well because she's involved in so much.
She's hardworking, really good athlete, takes education series and her sports series. I've had her in the weight room for probably two years and she's one of our kind of tone setters in the weight room for our young ladies.
She's a fierce competitor. She's a hard worker. She's dedicated and very involved in the school. My opinion, Zayla is the best all-around female athlete to come out of here since I've been here.
She's probably one of the busiest students I've ever been around in 22 years. And yet she's always smiling.
I look up to Coach Yancy because he really does a good job of like building the program, making us feel like we can really grow and be better.
She's really kind of the peak of what we want our kids to be. I know she's going to be successful if she keeps up the work that she's put in here at Raytown South and she keeps that determination and, and kind of that perseverance. Like she's going to be successful in whatever path she chooses.
If you've ever met Marcus, he's the epitome of a ray of hope. He's got a really bright smile, really contagious, positive attitude overall, great person. He's a phenomenal athlete, but I think he's even better person.
He's a highly recruited football player. So we get a lot of coaches coming here. And so when they come in, they ask me about him and I tell them all the things. I tell them he checks all the boxes and I mean it. He likes high school. That's how I characterize it. He likes being here at Raytown South, but he's a really, really awesome kid on the field and off.
He's one of the most humble kids I've ever met for a kid who's got the accolades that he's gotten.
As soon as he gets in the room, the room just lights up, which makes it a really fun place to be.
He is just an outstanding young man. He's just a great role model for our younger student athletes. Undoubtedly, Marcus is the number one or number two football player to come out of here in the last 18 years I've been here. No doubt he will make it to the NFL, in my opinion.
Marcus is probably one of the most charismatic students I've ever had. He's a natural leader. Kids respect him. You can catch him leading cheers. He leads songs in the locker room. He's just a kid that everybody gravitates to, students and adults. He's a fantastic young man and I think he's got a bright future.
He does it all for us. If my kids ended up being like Marcus, I would be honored as a father.
I had a lot of people in my life that helped me, like Coach Harris, my off, the whole coaching staff. You know, I felt like they believed in me and you know, and they showed me they believed in me.
It means a lot because I feel like I put a lot into the school because I, I love the school. I love being here and I love like the community that I'm in. And I feel like sometimes we don't have the best look from outsiders.
Keep pushing. Don't let anyone tell you you can't do anything. Never settle for less. Every time I look at them, I know what it's like to walk through these hallways as a cardinal through and through. They hear me say it from the first time we've met. I know what a lot of their lives look like. It's easy to relate to them. And I've just been blessed to have those two in class. Thank everybody, you know, that had an impact in my life. And I want to just give big thanks to the men above, God, without Jesus Christ too, without them, I would be here.
I just want to say thank you and I am truly honored. I think we're going to go up from here.
So these two are obviously great athletes, which you saw on the video. They're excellent students as well. Zayla has a 3.98 GPA as part of National Honor Society. And Marcus has a 3.48. So we are so proud. And if you would please join me up front.
Can they tell us, I was wondering if they could tell us what their future plans, plans are?
Zayla and Marcus come up front. They want to ask.
All right. You guys know where you're going to go to school? Where are you guys going to go to school?
Oh, okay. I'm going to school at Life University. It's in Marietta, Georgia. I'm going there to wrestle and study in psychology.
I'm going to Iowa State University. I'm planning on studying, studying kinesiology and just working hard whatever I do. So. My fault. And of course I'm playing football, of course.
Can we get your guys' autographs now or?
She likes that new flavor. What's that flavor? True. Yeah. I'm sure you know already. You got it. Hey, congratulations to both of you. Very proud of you. You represent us well. So we glad to be a part of what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Is that little brother right there? He's going to miss you when you go to school.
We have no public comment today. And next we'll have the board committee reports. Is anything from the finance committee?
No report.
The policy review committee, this is not here. None from the capital improvement committee, community engagement committee?
Yes.
The community engagement committee will be starting a new committee, youth engagement committee. We'll be having those that youth engagement committee started. And we'll be giving you updates on that at the next board meeting. Bob, Bob monthly. College Coaching Network will be putting up banners with the approval from Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin Knox. We'll be putting those, we'll be putting two of them up outside of the office and the cafeteria along with posters for the kids to get signed up for those. And we'll be doing those starting immediately. Me and Ms. Crawford talked about before and after school program, we'll, we'll have more. We'll, we'll, we'll be getting more information out on that. And we are doing a sports initiative program that will be starting up for the 24, 25, what 25, 26 year, we'll be getting more information on that.
Thank you. Safety committee is not here. And we did have a citizens advisory committee.
Yes, the citizens advisory committee met and during that time we had individuals present information as it pertains to the development of what we are currently classifying as the graduate profile. And what that is, is what our students are expected to know, be able to do and to look like upon their completion of school here in Raytown Quality Schools. Dr. Greiner has been working diligently with his team in terms of our strategic plan. But what that strategic plan will yield is what we will see in our student graduate profile. So we had DNG associates present and get information from our community about what they believe the characteristics are of individuals and what students should possess upon their completion of their schooling, not just our students, but also our staff as well. We also provided information or updates as it pertains to the change in the devices moving forward. Mr. Matt Verlinden provided information, but he also talked about art generative artificial intelligence to talk about what it is and how it should be used. And the fact that we as a district, to make sure that we're able to use that as a meaningful tool, we must have supports in place before moving in that direction. And the final topic on the agenda had to do with school safety, giving the citizens advisory committee an update on the work from our Raytown Safety Committee and sharing articles and information. on the work from our Raytown Safety Committee, um, and sharing articles and information as it relates to work, the work moving forward. Um, this concludes what transpired at the citizens advisory committee.
All right, thank you. That's be the end of our board committee reports.
Mr. President. I move the board approved February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four finance committee minutes, April eighth, twenty twenty-four board policy review committee meeting minutes, and May seventh, twenty twenty-four citizens advisory committee meeting minutes as presented.
Motion made and seconded. The revised twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, academic calendar. Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Elementary science resource renewal. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the, uh, H M H Science Dimensions for K five for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ten dollars and eighty-five cents as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Dr. Greiner?
President Burton, I'm here to answer any questions the board might have about the next few proposals.
Ready to vote? Motion passed. Amplify consumable, amplify consumable student books. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of after possibly consumable books for what one hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. I can say that's presented.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes.
The Board of Education approve the purchase of after five, X grade resource for twenty thousand nine hundred seven seven dollars and twenty-five cents as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes.
Mr. President. I just have a good general question since you're sitting down, because we don't usually have a lot of questions about these, but has your process for deciding which text you want to use has changed from from what's been and past?
No, we, we had a pilot process this year across all of our campuses with eighth grade teachers. Um, we gathered their feedback, provided professional learning, and obviously the, this eighth grade addition will now make us K eight utilizing the Amplify resource. So it really solidifies our science of reading commitment and we see Amplify as a, a great partner in that effort. So eighth grade was the only grade level that had not added Amplify as its primary resource, and so that is our plan for twenty-four, twenty-five.
And I'm just guessing that applies to all these text renewals or, or new purchases.
Yeah, so we, we bring committees together with teacher input and whether we are, uh, renewing like our K five H M H Science or we're looking to, uh, potentially utilize a new partner. There is a, a bid process. There is an interview, a pilot, uh, and then that committee makes a recommendation that we bring to the board.
You need a motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I move the Board of Education approve purchase of Amplify Desmos Math for middle school for a six-year term with a cost of three hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars ninety-two cents as presented. Like someone's very happy about that. All right, good. Never, never seen anybody cheer textbook purchases. We should work, but that's a good sign.
Motion passes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Is there a motion?
Yeah. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of ingenuity from Imagine Learning for eighty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
We were accepted to purchase of two thousand cross-ride licenses in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
Motion made and seconded. Do you discuss?
Is this new?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This is, uh, part of that grant that we were awarded a couple of months ago. This is the antivirus that we're going to get eighty percent of the cost deferred for.
Can I ask a, a related, kind of related question? We've seen on the news with Jackson County, Kansas City have these recent issues. Is this helping to protect us from some of those things or are we, are we learning from what happened to them and helping us not have that same?
Yeah, so our, our strategy is to try and put as many layers of defense between our student data and our staff data and outside world. And so we have now what this would represent as a sturdier antivirus than we currently have. And so it alone doesn't make us safe, but it's just something that makes us a little safer. And, and once again, with that, with that, uh, grant that we are awarded, we're actually getting it at a, at a pretty significant discount, so. Um, like I said, that's my nightmare situation would happen with Jackson County, so that's why, um, we're pretty passionate about security like they are textbooks and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep it safe here.
It's a tear going on up here.
Motion passes. Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have, uh, fresh po- produce vendor selection.
Second.
Mr. President, I have a question. Is that price, um, better? Did you change, is this saying that we are changing, um, companies? Is that a better?
So we're changing companies. This is the company that we've used since we brought back salads and fresh produce, uh, here in the last, uh, few months. Uh, Bruce will tell you that she's frustrated because the best, uh, social media posts we've had is about salad, uh, with the, the most traffic on it. Uh, but C N C, we were getting some of that stuff from Martin Brothers, uh, the fresh produce coming from them was not, um, the quality that we needed for our kids to eat. So we switched vendors, C N C. C N C was the only vendor that did apply for this. Um, you will be, I would foreshadow, you'll see some more of these things coming forth. Next year, uh, we have a director of food service coming on with Ginger Thompson. Uh, we have some meetings set up with some other area school districts that do, um, that concentrate on more, um, fresh, um, food like we want to see in our kitchens. It's a, the, the reason that, that number is approximate, if you look through the, the bid, you'll see, you know, apples are this much, broccoli is this much. Uh, we let our managers base, base their orders off what, um, they see kids eating, what kids are telling them they like. And so we can't dial that into the exact number because it depends on what we order, but that's looking at what we've spent so far, um, this year and then projecting that out.
Motion passes. Grocery and supply vendor.
Mr. President. I move the Board of Education approve grocery and supply bid from Martin Brother for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year approximately cost of two million one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion made and seconded.
Martin Brothers is our current vendor and has been for some time. Uh, they do a great job gaining supplies on time, uh, even this, even throughout the pandemic. They did a good job of gaining us what they could. Um, it's a vendor that we've had. Those numbers are commensurate with what we've seen in the past. Again, that number is approximate because that's based off what we're ordering.
Next we have the milk vendor selection.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
If we don't have any questions, that's it for me tonight.
You might say nothing about strawberry?
I'm going to go get in the strawberry.
I appreciate you.
What about ranch dressing? Already voted.
Good evening.
All right. Next we have, uh, the university health memorandum of understanding, teacher externship?
externship, yes.
Okay.
This is a opportunity for teachers to go out and learn about the industries that are out there and, um, find ways to integrate that into their instruction. This will give them an opportunity to see, um, somewhat what the, uh, our industry partners are looking for in, um, the students and, and new employees. And then also this idea of how to shift our instruction to make it very relevant in real life. And this is how, this is a step toward, um, really moving to real, real world learning. And so we have a, a teacher who was going to participate in that and, um, they'll be working with, um, the universe, university health, um, community this summer and they'll be learning, so that's what's before you.
Before we ask any questions. Motion.
Mr. President. I move the Board of Education approve the M O U as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Questions?
And what's that structure look like near the long learning through externships?
Sure. They will be paired up it with different, um, departments within, um, university health and they will, um, learn about, um, how to integrate their content with it. Um, and so they have an opportunity to, uh, based off the teacher's, um, experience, I believe it's a, in a, um, E L A teacher that's going to be going to find out what that looks like and how to integrate some of the things that you would find in the health, um, uh, field. And this is outside of just science. This is, this is about really understanding how to integrate all of that into their classroom, so that's what that's, that's. Yes, and we're just glad to have, uh, teachers who are willing to step out and try it. I think they'll be great champions for real world learning and even possibly to kind of tell, um, show other teachers that when we talk about academies, we're not moving away from actually content and the things that we expect our students to know, but it's about learning how to make the learning relevant to students and where their levels of interest are. And so we're excited about having some champions, um, to kind of move through our schools and talk about that this is something that is, uh, could be really powerful for the classroom. Yep.
Is it something, uh, the hundred and twenty hours, is that, we, is that like all at once, uh, during a certain period of time?
It's during the summertime, so, so they're gonna, this is the feature.
Oh, they comply it while they, this next year, okay.
Yes, so they can, right.
Oh, okay.
That's what they're going to do this summer.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Trauma Smart Training.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Trauma Smart Service Agreement in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand twenty-four dollars.
Motion made and seconded.
Is this for all teachers?
So this, uh, Dr. Douglas, this agreement for next year with Trauma Smart will serve, uh, our schools are in different years of support with Trauma Smart. So some will be moving to year two, some to year three, and so Trauma Smart coaches will provide a, a different level of service depending on what year in the continuum the staff, uh, has, is moving through. It also provides training for, uh, district social emotional learning coaches to provide training for new staff to the district as well. So it, it covers all of our staff that need the training depending on what year their school is in the program.
Next we have the dignity consulting agreement.
I move the board approved contract agreement with dignity consulting amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars to twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. New classroom interactive displays.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the bid from KCAV with the installation of one hundred Clear Touch six thousand eight plus panels for the total price of two hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred five dollars.
All right. So.
Good evening. Um, so we are looking at these new classroom panels and our teachers selected the Clear Touch six thousand eight plus. Um, and the process through this.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What's your name?
I am Amanda Cahill. I'm the District Instructional Technology Coordinator. Sorry. And we have two teachers here with us that piloted these panels and they're gonna share what it was like as a teacher and then how their students use these panels. So, yes. Um, so first off, we created a Vanguard Committee that we selected teachers across the district that were interested in classroom technology to use with students. Um, so myself and Danielle McFarland, we took feedback from teachers on how they liked each of these panels. So we selected three different panels that we showed teachers back in December. And then we purchased some and we piloted the piloted them from March until now. Um, and then last Monday, we met and scored the panels and our teachers overall selected the Clear Talk Touch Model.
So each teacher got to review each, all three of them?
Um, some teachers got to review two, some just got to review one. Um, but we overall as a team, we reviewed each of them together and scored them all together. Yep.
So um, I'm Jake Adamson. I'm the music teacher at Eastwood Hills Elementary. And um, going into the benefits, it integrates Google, um, the Google ecosystem into these panels. And um, personally, as a teacher, I love the Google ecosystem. It really helps me with my organization and um, just having all my assignments right there. And I know with the Clear Touch, um, the with the Google system being right there, it will make it really seamless and streamless going forward. Um, enhance collaboration, um, promote it promotes interactive discussion and teamwork amongst students. I know like um, with these new panels, students would be able to connect their Chromebooks to the panels. So like if teachers like, oh, someone's doing such a really good job with this assignment, how about you show the entire class what that looks like? So the student would be able to cast it up there. Um, I also know that the teachers, as they're creating their assignments on the panels, then they can um, from the panel, they can hit a button and it'll go straight to the students' Chromebooks. So there's no more saying, oh, I need someone to go pass out these papers. It's right there on your stuff. Um, and then, yeah, and then the access, the um, access to educational resources. Um, like I was talking about earlier, like just the integration of it in, it really, really works really well. And then, yeah, connective, oh, this is the other thing I meant to say. So these are wireless connecting um, panels. So no longer is the teacher tethered to the desk now um, with paired with our uh, computers with the convertible into tablets. Teachers, they can cast their computers to the panel and um, move around the classroom to help with proximity and all the other stuff. And then um, when they're casting from their computers to their panels, uh, there's a whiteboard feature on the on the computers where teachers can then use the whiteboard and go up there and they can even be like at the table like, okay, you know, do this problem. So, yeah.
Yes, it is very game changing.
Yes.
Um, I have the pleasure of introducing this to quite a variety of students being in special needs. Um.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Who are you?
My name is Katie Schonger. We were at elementary.
Okay, thank you.
I have a a variety of ages in my room. And so I go from second grade through fifth grade of varying needs. And so you can see of some of the pictures where I was able to raise and lower because of the vast height difference between those second through fifth graders. I even had a few kindergarten friends that would come over because someone wasn't being safe in theirs. They'd come over, they loved being on it. They got to actually write the problem so it's number recognition. They got to work on their penmanship because the smart boards we have now, you put your 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 hand on it to write properly, like we do with pen and paper and how all OT teaches it, it will actually jump around. So you had to learn how to float your hand, which is difficult when you're already struggling with occupational therapy issues. So with this program, you can actually have your hand on there and writing and it's not jumping around. It's actually writing what you wanted to, which in the if just basically empowers that student all the more um, in just their basic ability. They also are able to manipulate it because I'm sorry, children nowadays, they know how to work a tablet. They know how to work this system. So they are very pushed into it. Matter of fact, the time that I passed it off to let another teacher try it out in their other room, kid said, Michelle, where's our board? And I'm like, sorry, guys, we had to share. Okay, is it coming back? I said, well, that's what we're going to ask them to for it to come back. They said, okay, so I've had both multiple kids and even other staff members go, I like the way this works. It's clear. You're not having to uh, adjust a detector to make sure you're not being tethered to one spot and then having to walk over and go back. Um, I checked my connectivity. I was two rooms down during professional development and my eyes reported, yeah, everything you were clicking on your computer was active on the board. So it's just empowering to give that a much uh, uh, autonomy to the teachers.
Um, just a special thanks to our whole Vanguard Committee. It took a lot of work to get this done and they gave true feedback that truly let us pick the board that was best for our teachers and students. Um, so we just want to say thank you to our Vanguard Committee. Um, and then does anyone have any questions?
So I guess I was just lucky, I guess. I was in the building one day and got to see one of these in operation. So agree with everything you're saying. The bad news and the hard question is it it makes me sad that we can all, we're only gonna buy a hundred of these right now. Is there any way we can speed that up and buy more of these because because they are so good, it 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 doesn't seem fair to to make this be a five-year project and have some classes and teachers waiting that long for a new tool like this.
Yeah, and what we're trying to do is avoid uh, massive shocks to our budget. And in essence, create what's what's going to be really a rotation of of uh, of interactive panels going forward. And so that that's why that was what the thought and the strategy was, was to kind of um, do this over the course of a couple of years. Once again, so that we didn't bring a about a two million dollar bill right while in one year. Also, we are going to try and get this done over a summer and I don't know that we could have done six hundred boards in one summer. So I agree with you.
So six hundred is your total number that you're looking at?
I I think it was about six hundred is what what it was gonna be then. Yes, sir.
Well, obviously, I'm both for in favor of this, but I don't know. Can you guys maybe take a second look to see if there's any way we could do do more?
We can talk about it. I'm sorry. I thought you didn't choose.
Because because they are amazing and I just I can see what you were saying already. We want to and can you get less? Have we want it back? And so engaging the kids is what it's all about. So.
And and I heard the comments about how much the kids like the the staff like. So I hear the feedback and what we'll do is we'll see what we can do. A, to provide better building and also try and get this moving a little bit quicker. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have uh, the first read. Policies. Policies uh, reviewed uh, April eighth. And the Board Policy Review Committee meeting, just for information.
Mr. President, I move that the Board approved the May thirteen, twenty twenty-four consent agenda as presented.
President, I move that the Board of John Reddick Board of Education meeting at eight eighteen noon.
And it's back in there.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Not enough.
I have some questions.
Meeting adjourned.